We have six items. The first item is approval of petition to vacate a portion of Cornwall Avenue right of way adjacent to Parkview Elementary School. And, uh, Brian, are you here?
I am. Thank you, Councilmember Knudsen. So I'm Ryan Nelson with the City of Bellingham Planning Department. The Bellingham School District has petitioned the City of Bellingham to vacate a portion of the Cornwall Avenue right of way adjacent to the Parkview Elementary School. I'll bring that up here on a aerial map so everybody can see. So this is the southern entrance to Parkview Elementary School. And the right of way is ultimately the eastern half of Cornwall Avenue. And the purpose for the, the right of way vacation is to facilitate on development of the, uh, the new Parkview Elementary School that is recently commenced construction. Additionally, um, the, the City of Bellingham, or excuse me, the, um, school district has asked City Council to waive the requirement for compensation associated with that right of way. And so this really is, uh, step number one in the process. City of Bellingham owns the adjacent, um, Cornwall Park property. And so the first required step in this is for the City Council to provide direction to the mayor to sign the petition, in which case, then it'll go before a public hearing with the hearing examiner and it'll be back before City Council for, uh, final approval. And so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Any questions? Do we have a motion? Lisa?
Not necessarily to delay this, and, and I would support it, but there's just kind of a curiosity that sometimes working with the Bellingham School District regarding property access and exchanges. Um, do we ever consider, uh, we're potentially turning over, uh, property that belongs to the city? And I know on, um, in the York neighborhood where the school bus barn is, uh, wanting to be able to put in, um, trail and access and buffer and perhaps revegetation along Wacom Creek, um, which is, um, that section is owned by the school district. I just kind of hope in a way that as we work with them to be able to meet their needs that perhaps there eventually would be that exchange that they would work with the city for environmental um, and trail work so that we can better that area along, um, uh, Wacom Creek. I think, I believe that we should have good partnerships to meet each other's needs. And so I'm hoping in the future, um, we'll be able to further our work and, um, helping our Wacom Creek. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Michael?
I'm just gonna move to authorize the mayor to sign the petition to begin the vacation process.
I second.
Okay, motion been made by Councilor Liliquist, second by Councilmember Stone. Is there any further discussion?
I just, I just had a quick follow-up question. Um, I was just curious of the, um, rough amount that one half of the appraised value. Do we have an assessment of, of approximately how much that, that would be that we're waiving?
We don't at this time, so the next step is the applicant will be required to provide an appraised valuation associated with that. So at this point in time, we, we really aren't really aware of what that valuation want that be.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is a discussion of a resolution in support of renewal of the Bellingham Transportation Fund in November 2020 general election. This is presented by the law firm of Stone and Liliquist, so take it away. Go ahead, Hannah.
All right, um, so yes, Councilmember Liliquist and I are coming before the council today to discuss a resolution in support of the transportation fund. As you all know, the fund is facing renewal. It was passed overwhelmingly by voters 10 years ago during a recession, and now more than ever, this uh, funding source is really critical. So this is two tenths of one, uh, two tenths of one percent um, in the sales tax, so not a new tax, but a renewal of that tax. And I think what's so critical right now is to focus on that, that equity piece and that, you know, probably 70% of, of projects have been in low and moderate income neighborhoods and making sure that as we move forward during another time of financial strain, um, that we're able to really protect and promote safe travel and mobility in, in all parts of the city irrespective of, of income. And I also wanted to just mention, you know, the investment right now is key. This funding's not going to be coming from anywhere else. So we're estimating over the next 10 years roughly $60 million. And over the past 10 years, I think it's important to mention just the ability to also leverage those funds. And so over the last 10 years, seeing roughly $4.3 million, um, leveraged through state and, um, federal grants, some of which are like the Safe Routes to School program. Um, so that investment in infrastructure here in Bellingham, these revenue sources stay here in Bellingham. But in addition, just the investment in jobs and thinking about the job creation that comes from these projects being, brought to Bellingham by local, you know, Wacom and Skagit County contractors as well as their subcontractors. And so I know it's, it's not something that the council does often, um, in coming before, you know, city and passing a resolution on a ballot measure. And as part of this, I believe we are required to have a hearing. So we're proposing that there will be a public hearing at our next meeting on October 12th to allow the public to, to weigh in on, on this, but really just be a strong recommendation to voters to, um, support Proposition 2020-14. Councilmember Liliquist, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I think you should start making the motion right now. Good. Could you go ahead and make the motion, Hannah?
Sure, I can make a motion. Um, so I would move approval, well, I guess move to, um, hold a hearing at the October 12th meeting with respect to a resolution in support of renewal of the Bellingham Transportation Fund.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Councilmember Stone, second by Councilmember Liliquist. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is a summary of electronic home monitoring. Is that you, Darlene?
It is. Good afternoon, council members. This is Darlene Peterson. I am your court administrator. And I'm here with Kathy Smith. She is our jail alternatives and diversion manager. And we're here to give you a brief overview of our electric home monitoring program. This is on number, page number 172 of your packet, but I'm gonna go ahead and screen share that. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, and now I'm gonna have Kathy Smith take over and introduce a little bit about herself.
Good afternoon, council members. Um, my name is Kathy Smith and I am your jail alternatives and diversion manager. Um, I've held that position since April of last year. And since this is actually, um, my first time before the council, I'll just give you a brief background about myself. Um, I'm a retired assistant chief from the great state of Texas, uh, where I spent over 20 years in law enforcement. Uh, my best friend in high school happens to live in Ferndale, so that's how I moseyed my way up to the Bellingham area. And in February of 2016, I was actually hired by our vendor, Friendship Diversion Services, or FDS, uh, to open the satellite office here, uh, because they were about to enter into a contract with the city to provide the electronic home detention and monitoring program. So that's how I first met Darlene. Um, and we worked together, um, getting that branch office off the ground, uh, developing policies and procedures, uh, creating all of the documents that we still currently use and basically got the office up and running. Um, I left Bellingham at the end of 2017 and returned, uh, early last year, um, at about the same time that disposition was posted, and so here I am. So as I mentioned earlier, February of 2016, in response to the Bellingham reduces incarceration challenge, uh, the city entered into a contract with FDS to provide electronic home monitoring and detention um, in hopes of reducing the number of people that we were, um, sending or keeping, uh, in the Wacom County Jail. And as it was then, and as it maintains today, we typically use two different devices as part of the programs. One is a GPS monitor, monitoring device, um, and the other is a SCRAM alcohol monitoring device. Uh, so the GPS device is a, uh, simple ankle device that goes on the defendant's ankle. And it uses global positioning system, uh, to send updates to FDS staff every two seconds, and that's 24 hours, seven days a week. And basically for post, uh, conviction purposes, we consider one successful day on the bracelet to equal one day in jail. Um, and then we also use a SCRAM device, and SCRAM stands for Secure Continuous Remote Alcohol Monitoring. That's also a device that's placed on the defendant's ankle. And it measures transdermal alcohol secretion or basically sweat. And that measures every 30 minutes, 24 hours and seven days a week. That device also measures skin temperature, uh, which is important when, uh, defendants might try to slide a sock or a pant leg between the device and their ankle um, in order to limit the device's ability to measure, uh, alcohol's secretion. So it's a pretty amazing little device. So those are our two primary devices. Um, so we'll focus on, uh, the GPS, um, information first. We use our GPS bracelet both pre-trial and post-conviction. Primary pre-trial just means that the device is being worn as the, uh, criminal case moves through the court system. And the two reasons we would place somebody on a GPS bracelet pre-trial would be for active supervision. And active supervision is when a defendant, um, has a pending domestic violence, uh, charge. And that the, uh, court feels there is some concern that the defendant may not be able to stay away from the alleged victim. So we place a GPS device on that defendant, and instead of requiring them to stay at home as in a home detention program, they're free to move about, but, uh, they are not free to enter any exclusion zones that the court might set. And those exclusion zones would include, uh, the alleged victim's, uh, residence, workplace, school place, that type of stuff. So when a defendant's on active GPS, they're allowed to roam about, but if they get close to any of those exclusion zones, FDS staff is immediately, uh, notified. They attempt to contact the defendant via cell phone. Um, if that's not successful, the device also allows FDS staff to contact the defendant through the device and actually communicate with them through the device. And if that's not, uh, successful, the device has a 95 decibel siren that FDS staff, staff can activate, activate, and by that time, FDS is already on the phone with 911, uh, to let local law enforcement know that, um, the defendant is approaching a zone that they're excluded from. And then the other pre-trial situation that we would use a GPS device for would be until a defendant's able to post bail. So instead of sitting in jail while they're trying to come up with some cash, um, or, uh, bail amounts set by our judicial officer, um, the judge may allow them out on a GPS bracelet, and they are detained, um, at their residence until they're able to pay that bill. And then once they pay their bill, the device comes off and they're not being monitored at that time. So any questions? Just quickly about the GPS stuff before we talk about, um, how we determine who's eligible to wear the device?
Any questions, anybody? Okay, go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, thank you. Um, so for those that are going to serve on the GPS bracelet, the court has developed a, a screening program. Um, we've developed a screening tool. It's basically a one-page document. Um, and every defendant, um, that comes before the court, um, usually by initial appearance or arraignment, gets screened. And right now, we're averaging about 220 screenings per month. Um, and at this rate, about 75% of all the defendants that we screened, uh, qualify for the GPS program. Um, so basically that, uh, uh, screening tool assesses, um, criminal history, failure to appear history, age and, uh, conviction history, pending charges, outstanding warrants, and any current protective orders that they may have. And the top two reasons that defendants are found to be ineligible for the GPS program are excessive risk assessment points, which are based on those categories I just gave you, or if they have a pending domestic violence or violent felony charge, they would not be eligible, uh, to wear the bracelet. Now, for those that only have a pending domestic violence or violent, uh, felony charge pending, once that is resolved, especially if it's with our court, if they meet all other requirements, then at that point, they would become eligible to wear the bracelet. Um, and some defendants are actually permanently disqualified, uh, for convictions, uh, including violent felony convictions, felony sex offenses, harassment, escape, reckless burning, or unlawful imprisonment. So any defendant that has a, uh, conviction in any of those categories would be deemed to be permanently disqualified from wearing the GPS device. And right now, uh, percentage-wise, the top two reasons that we permanently disqualify a defendant are because of a violent felony conviction or a harassment conviction. And right now on the list that I, um, am maintaining, we have over 265 defendants that we deem to be permanently disqualified from serving in the GPS program. So having said all that, since February of 2016, when we entered into the contract with FDS, over 1,400 defendants have participated in the GPS program. Nearly 24,000 days, um, on the GPS device have been ordered to be served. And we're running at about a 95% successful completion rate. And the two primary reasons that folks tend to fail out of the GPS program are basically unapproved stops or, uh, unapproved locations, and believe it or not, failure to charge the battery on the device, so. And the biggest benefit besides the, um, jail cost savings that I think Darlene's gonna address later in our presentation is while a defendant is on a GPS bracelet, he or she is, um, able to be at home. They're able to work. They're able to keep attending school. They're allowed to go to treatment. Um, and so it really, um, prevents other disruptors, um, that they may experience if they were spending that time uh, in a jail cell as opposed to at home. So that's kind of a brief summary of our GPS program. Again, any questions before I move on to the SCRAM program?
Michael?
Kathy, just a very quick question. How big are these, um, braces or anklets? Where are they worn? My real question is, um, do they ever get interfere with someone's ability to work? For example, if they need to wear steel toe work boots or something like that?
That's funny you ask that because I was thinking right before the presentation that somebody might ask that, and I kind of wish I had had a picture. Both devices, I would say the bracelet is, uh, the actual strap of the bracelet is maybe an inch wide. The actual working part of the bracelet or, or what might be described as the box is maybe an inch and a half to two inches each direction. They're very lightweight. We had had instances, um, where folks that have to wear work boots, um, would complain about having to have a, a device in the work boot. Um, and we just kind of tell them, don't lace your boots all the way up. I mean, there's, you know, if, there's just has to be some compromise in that. We've never had anyone not be able to wear a device or, or have to choose between the device and employment. Um, so I don't think it's, it's been a, a big issue. We just kind of work around. I, I, and I do take that back. We had one deep sea diver, um, who could not dive because of the limitations of the GPS device. But besides that one defendant, in the entire time I'm familiar with the program, I think he's the only one who's had to choose between employment and the device.
Holly?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I'll start with one. Um, is, at the point of sentencing, is the option to somebody convicted 30 days in jail or 30 days on home monitoring, is that, is it equivalent? And, um, or is there, is, and how much of an option is it for the, uh, convicted person? How much of it is in their hands? Do we have people who are choosing jail over, um, the home monitoring? And I'd like to hear more about why, if that's happening as well. So maybe it's not, that, that might be more than one question, but related.
That's okay. So, um, yes, when one sub-prosecutor and, uh, the defense attorney, um, representing the defendant, uh, choose to consider home detention as an option, it's basically 30 for 30 or 10 for 10. Now, one thing is if, if they do time in jail, they may get, um, credit for time served or credit for, so that they may actually do less days in jail than they would on the monitor, and that's something that jail staff calculate. Um, when, when, once they're at that point, we're not really involved in that decision or in that calculation. Um, but some defendants simply just choose to do the full 30 days rather than maybe 25 or 26 in jail because it's just much more comfortable to do that at home and to be able to maintain your employment and your household. Um, as far as defendants who have chosen jail, um, I don't think it's a very common occurrence. I know there have been a few defendants who just have an absolute aversion to having something strapped around their ankle. And I've heard that brought up before, um, but I think it happens, um, very little. And I think overall, again, based on my experience, both when I worked with FDS and now with the city, large majority just, just find that the GPS bracelet is just a much easier option for them.
Go ahead, Holly.
Little follow-up to that. Um, so I noticed that, um, when it comes to cost, uh, defendants who choose to serve their sentence by a house arrest are responsible for the cost associated with the, for the program. Unless, um, they earn less than 150% of the federal poverty income guidelines, which is actually, that's, I think, if I'm not mistaken, about $20,000 a year. So it's still pretty, that's pretty, pretty low threshold there. So I was wondering if people are not choosing the home monitoring system because of cost. And because I see that we're also saving ourselves a lot of money, um, with the, the estimated costs of jail are much higher than that of the home detention. So, um, is cost ever a factor for, for people who are convicted?
Holly, I'll jump in on that one. This is Darlene. I'm gonna be covering costs then a little bit, but one of the goals of the city was that no defendant would be, barred from participating because of cost. And so we have, um, indigent defendants are completely covered. If they are not indigent, there's a sliding scale fee, and it goes up. The maximum cost for a bracelet is $14.50 a day, whereas compared to one day in jail is $144 a day. So it's hugely, um, better for the city if we have to supplement, to be supplementing for those bracelets. But that's the reason that our sliding scale was, uh, created to, like most of our programs, it's 125% of the poverty level, and that's gone up to 150.
Okay, Hannah, go ahead.
That was gonna be my question, Holly, maybe, about whether it was cost prohibitive, so thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Kathy, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so the other device, um, that we use, um, is called the SCRAM device, and that's the device that measures, uh, alcohol secretion. For our SCRAM device, there is no screening protocol used. And a majority of the defendants that, uh, we place on SCRAM are, uh, in a pre-trial status, so they're waiting, um, for their offense to kind of move through the court system. And obviously, anyone, uh, with an alcohol-related offense, primarily DUI, but also it could be a domestic violence incident where alcohol was alleged to have been a factor. Um, that defendant may also be placed on a SCRAM, a SCRAM device while their case moves through the court. Um, our policy is that all defendants who are placed on a SCRAM device are also monitored by the Wacom County Probation Department. We do have a contract with them to provide probation services. And so not only are they being monitored by the, uh, alcohol device, but, uh, as part of their probation requirements, they're also undergo, um, required to undergo a drug alcohol evaluation to, uh, complete a victim impact panel, and then they're required to participate and complete any treatment that may, uh, been a result of that, um, evaluation they completed. And so as they're moving through the probation program, uh, completing all of these requirements, they're also being monitored 24/7 for, uh, alcohol consumption. And it really has, the SCRAM device, when I started with FDS, I think before I left FDS, I had only installed two SCRAM devices. Um, as of this morning, I think we have a total of maybe 14 defendants on a GPS device, and we have over 80 defendants on a SCRAM device. Um, so it really has become, uh, a very essential part of the city's successful program, um, of addressing, um, alcohol, uh, crimes. Because it really allows real-time supervision of those that we consider to be high-risk offenders. Um, and then the SCRAM device also allows probation to, um, have that as a sanction option. So let's say a defendant is, um, being monitored by probation, but for some reason, um, it wasn't requested by the city that they wear a SCRAM device. However, let's say they're failing to attend treatment or not making their probation appointments, then the probation officer can, um, use that SCRAM device as a sanction, uh, rather than the GPS device or jail to kind of, uh, prod that defendant along to, to regain compliance. So it's been a really nice tool for us, and, uh, the court really does rely on it to, uh, to keep the community safe. Um, so just for some basis statistics, like I said, the stats in the report that you have were as of August 31st, we had 85 defendants on a SCRAM bracelet. And since February of 2016, when the contract started, we've had over 530 participants, um, in the SCRAM program. And, uh, 99.6% of all days served on the SCRAM bracelet were served sober. And, uh, the city's average compliance rate for SCRAM is, uh, 78%. And the national average is 76%. So we feel like we're right in line. We feel like we're using the bracelet adequately. Um, and we get those statistics by the, uh, SCRAM monitoring company every month and then annually, so we can, uh, kind of see where our program falls. So again, before Darlene, um, starts talking about money, is, are there any other questions about the SCRAM device or the SCRAM program?
Go ahead, Holly.
Uh, so there has been a pretty big increase in the number, the average number of days on SCRAM, uh, according to this graph. Can you, um, explain why that might be happening or theories as to why that might be happening? If you don't know facts about why?
Are you talking about 2019 and 2020, the numbers?
Yeah, in particular, the, the recent ones.
Well, um, you know, we had this discussion yesterday. I think, uh, part of the increase in 2020 is, I think, is directly related to the COVID situation. Um, when the court shut down back in March in response to, um, the COVID, we basically, um, stopped holding hearings and, uh, continued everything out, which was allowed by the Washington State Supreme Court. And so all those defendants who would have had hearings every two, every couple of weeks or every three weeks basically went two or more months without any hearings. And so I think that's part of the reason that the, uh, number of days has increased, especially this year, and I think they kind of will because the courthouse right now is still closed.
I think another thing too, Holly, is that, um, in the past, when you were on probation and you were being supervised, you had to go to the depr- probation department and you had to perform your analysis. And sometimes there were people who had to go every day to get the breath test. And so what was interfering with their work and, um, it, it wasn't very effective because you could drink on Friday night and come in Monday, and there would be no tail of the alcohol. And so part of what has happened is over time, the bracelets have become used a lot more because it allows a defendant not to have to leave their job. By having that bracelet on, they're not running back and forth to probation to have your analysis and to have probation appointments. And it also provides such a deeper level of community safety because any time that they consume alcohol, it's going to be, um, monitored by the company. And so I think that's another reason that it's been going up. I think it's become more of a tool so that we have less, um, less monitoring the other ways by probation.
Okay, Darlene, you wanna go ahead?
I'm just gonna, very briefly, um, I'll go back to the cost there. Um, GPS, which is the bracelet that's mostly used instead of the cost there. Um, GPS, which is the bracelet that's mostly used instead of serving the sentence. We've saved almost four million dollars since we began using the bracelets. That's not money we happen to have in a savings bank. That is money that would have had to come out of the fund if we weren't doing the bracelets. Um, it's much harder with SCRAM to be able to quantify that. Um, with SCRAM, some of the people are doing it in lieu of jail because maybe they would have had to stay in uh the jail longer until some of their hearings came up. Maybe in the past, they would have got a probation sanction for violating their probation, which would have included jail. And and we no long, we had the bracelet to do that instead of having people serve jail. So I just took a look at the numbers. Um, we have spent about five hundred and fifty thousand on SCRAM bracelets. If those, if just a quarter of the people, twenty-five percent of the people that we have on SCRAM had served jail sentences, that would have been over one point five million dollars. So it is, as far as cost-wise, it is, it is really um a savings not only for the city but for defendants. The average cost, as I mentioned before, of staying in jail was a hundred and forty-four dollars a day with a one hundred and sixteen dollar booking fee. Uh, the cost of electric home monitoring, either a SCRAM bracelet or GPS, is fourteen fifty a day um with a fifty-dollar enrollment fee. And if if we really get down to what's vital for these defendants and for people in our community, it's really that they're able to keep their jobs, their homes, their social benefits. They're able to take care of their children, attend school, attend work, attend treatment, go to counseling, go to the probation appointments, medical and dental appointments, scheduled court hearings, attorney appointments, all while still being accountable for whatever the criminal reason is that they were sentenced. And so in, as far as the city, we're also saving those social services. When people get placed in jail, as some of you may know, a lot of times, all those social programs that they've been set up on, they lose. And then when they get out of jail, they have to start all over again. If they've been on any kind of subsidized housing or anything like that, they'll be removed from that, and then you have to start that application process, all those programs, all over again. So it really is beneficial um for our defendants and for the community. And so that's, that's basically all I have on the cost.
Okay, thanks, Darlene. Uh, Michael?
This is, uh, first of all, I I love the fact we're saving money, but what really matters is public safety. Um, it doesn't matter how many people we arrest or how many people stay in jail. Those numbers are going to go up and down. What really matters is the number of crimes that are committed in the future. And so the question is, is there data nationally or locally on the rate of recidivism, on whether or not people who are allowed to serve home monitoring either pre-trial or post-conviction, whether or not uh those defendants or those convicted uh individuals, whether or not they have a lower rate of recidivism? If this works as advertised, if people are allowed to maintain their integration with society, maintain their work, um, I really hope that they never return to getting in trouble. Is there any evidence that home monitoring actually improves those outcomes long-term?
I'm unaware of any studies that have happened regarding that. And part of the reason is that in the past, the um, the the bracelets were done mostly by private companies, and there was not a lot of supervision, and courts were very leery to use them. And so over the last several years, it's really become an issue. You've probably heard of national cases where defendants are placed on, in-home um arrest on a bracelet. And so hopefully, as time goes on, we will see some statistics on recidivism. And I can tell you, we definitely have defendants who've been on a bracelet who come back. But I've also heard the stories of people who felt that it was a reminder, and every time they thought about drinking, that bracelet would be a reminder that there would be a consequence. And so it helped at least when they had the bracelet on to keep them sober. But I think that's really a great thing to look forward to in the future is is to compare that and see if we can get some statistics around that.
So are we gathering the data now that would allow us to look back in a couple of years and find out?
We know who has successfully completed on the bracelets. It's about ninety-five percent. Um, as far as being able to compare with those people who are not on a bracelet, um, we certainly have the ability to do that. We're keeping all the statistics for the bracelet. But our, the amount of people who are not on bracelets is very small, but we definitely can compare those.
Councilmember Vargas, then Stone.
A quick comment before my question. Um, I think the electric home monitoring is probably one of the best things that the City of Bellingham did in regards to reforming our criminal justice system. And I am so uh pleased with um how this is making a difference in people's lives. Um, and what I'm curious about is um not what we're doing, but if the county has gotten on board yet, and if they are implementing the same system that we have implemented.
At this point, what the county is using the bracelet for is simply alcohol monitoring. And so they, through their jail, through the Watkins County Jail, they are monitoring people. Um, I think their numbers have, it's varied. It's been somewhere between fifty to eighty defendants that they have on bracelets for alcohol. They are not using bracelets for GPS. So for serving your sentence, unless you qualify for one of their programs, they don't specifically give you a GPS bracelet in lieu of jail. So that's something that we're doing differently.
So none of their pre-trials, because of course, we have no room in the jail, and our booking costs are really high, our day fees are really high, but they are still not reducing their pre-trials?
Not by GPS, no. They may be, you know, I have to be careful because they may be keeping more people out of jail because they are supervising them on the SCRAM brace, or they have a different kind of bracelet, but on an alcohol bracelet. So that probably does help somewhat, because those people that they may have placed in jail, they're they're putting on a bracelet. So it might help some with that. Um, I don't know how much, though.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you. Thank you, President Knudsen. Um, so I just, I I appreciate the um, the benefits that, you know, Darlene and Kathy have outlined, obviously, the cost savings, and and I'm supportive of the ability for people to, you know, have an option outside of of jail and hopefully options that keep people in their local communities here. I would just caution that we continue to look at the the pros and cons of this. It's still a form of imprisonment, obviously. Um, and the the idea just about, some of it's the um, just having, as an immigration attorney, clients who are on, you know, bracelets, which are operated and managed by a separate entity um other than FDS. But um some of the, you know, health restrictions, some of the things that Councilmember Lilik was mentioned about, you know, with work, if you have on work boots and um concerns of that that sort. But also I know that with these bracelets, when you talk about some people dropping out or off because of, you know, the device is not being charged, um, my understanding is that when you have those bracelets, that you have to charge them daily and, you know, it gets plugged in directly to the bracelet, and you have to sit by the outlet for a couple of hours. Um, and so those, you know, types of of restrictions. Um, so just to, I just want to, you know, keep that in mind and make sure that we're continuing to um to analyze those pros and cons. But obviously, the cost and and the ability to keep people working and, you know, in the community is certainly a huge advantage. So thank you for um for the work you're doing.
Okay, Darlene, thank you very much. And uh, um, Kathy, thank you too. This was uh very informative and um kind of encouraging to see that uh we've saved almost four point two million dollars, so. Okay, we will now go to the next item, which is a consideration of an ordinance amending Bellingham Municipal Code two point one six point one zero zero, which relates to the city's electronic home detention and monitoring program. Peter, are you there?
I am here. Good afternoon, counsel, and I apologize for not turning my video on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have an unstable connection, so I'm not going to turn my video on. It might crash it, so. Now that we've had a, an overview um from Darlene and Kathy on the program, this is really, it's it's a housekeeping ordinance, but it's important because this was a new program in, for the city in two thousand sixteen. And we didn't work into the ordinance establishing it as part of municipal court supervision. We didn't work in the alcohol monitoring aspect as much as we should have. So the court has the juris, they have the authority to order these things. But the important thing is that by ordinance, we established this as part of the municipal court supervision, which gives us some protections under state law regarding liability. And so I just want, uh, I'm, we're proposing this ordinance to make sure that it is explicitly part of the out, the municipal court services uh supervision program. And that's the essence of this ordinance, and uh if there are any questions, I can answer those.
Okay, counsel? We need somebody to make a motion.
Councilmember Knudsen, or President Knudsen, um, yeah, I would make a motion for um approval of the ordinance. I just had one question, which I think um Peter clarified. I was just making sure that the changes that are presented are to align the code with what's happening in practice now. It's not to change what's currently happening, right?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah. So I would, yeah, move approval.
Okay.
And I second it. Um, I did have my hand up just to raise. Um, I didn't make a comment on the previous presentation because I wanted to make it here. As I'm really glad the city is doing some housecleaning, getting this officially on the books. Um, as we mentioned, the saving the money being very important and also keeping members in the community is important. But also, let's not lose sight of, for members of our community who are jailed for um these type of offenses, the psychological um damage and mental health uh issues that can arise by being put in jail, that we're avoiding this. And um even though it is a monitoring system, they're able to maintain their dignity and a certain level of freedom. So um I'm in full support of this, and I really appreciate the information that you've brought forward on it.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. We have a motion by Councilmember Stone, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is consideration of an ordinance creating a shelter protection area for base camp located at fifteen thirty Cornwall Avenue.
Rick, if if I might begin, uh, good afternoon, council members. I'm joined by Tara Sundin, our Community and Economic Development Manager, as well as Peter Raffato, our city attorney, even though he is on an unstable connection.
I'm glad you didn't say unstable condition, so.
I'm glad he's participating. Um, as we introduce this topic, it's important to acknowledge um that this proposed ordinance is not about displacing unsheltered individuals who must live in their cars because they have no choice. For those folks, the city will be issuing an RFP, Request for Proposal, to find a partner to establish one or more safe parking areas this week. So we hope to come back in front of con, uh, council uh in the near term with respondents and establish those areas. Today's focus is about the safety of those unsheltered community members who are currently using the base camp facility. This matter returns to council. Uh, we've discussed an update at your last meeting on the progress of base camp. And we discussed the need to create a protection area that limits camping and congregation in parking areas within the right-of-way, immediately adjacent to that one block on which base camp is located. This ordinance has been prepared at the request of the Lighthouse Mission Ministries um and project naters, neighbors, to address observed impacts associated with uh individuals and groups camping and congregating in the surrounding right-of-way. Um, these are not new issues. These issues were present both in Holly Street and present also when the uh drop-in center moved to Bellingham High School. However, the remedy is one that is new and and we feel appropriate at this time. I should also note that Lieutenant David Crass is available on this uh presentation and for your questions, and he can describe with specificity the kind of issues that have been observed and the kind of effects they create. Um, many of those folks who are camping and congregating in the right-of-way around base camp are engaged in illegal activities that put guests at the base camp facility at risk. Many folks who are camping and congregating in the right-of-way do not use base camp as a shelter. Many are barred from using base camp as a shelter. Barring is generally due to behaviors. And as you know, uh, the mission has the ability to bar folks from services if they can't follow the basic rules of the base camp facility. I would note, um, and this is very important, uh, the base camp area, the the protection area for base camp does not criminalize homelessness. It's extraordinarily limited in size, and it's not implied anywhere else in the city. It does provide a means to protect the safety of base camp guests, and is one of many other progressively applied tools uh we have in play to address inappropriate behaviors in the immediate area around the facility. I should note, there are reasonable choices available for folks to park their cars, to sit and to gather in very close proximity, and I'll call this up. Um, what you're seeing is a map that shows all of the seating areas and public areas where you can gather or park your vehicles or sit.
I'm not seeing that yet.
I'm so sorry. There we go. Good. Do you have it now? Thumbs up, good. Um, what you're seeing is an assessment of those areas within a quarter-mile radius. That's what we use typically as a convenient walking distance and also half-mile. That show um both benches and picnic tables, um seating facilities in our parks and in other public areas and other features that are available. There are ample choices in the surrounding area outside of the area that would be excluded uh for this. Um, I should say, nothing that is proposed prevents people from gathering and talking um for walking to and from. We're really focusing on those uh activities that have been occurring um and primarily after hours, after the doors are closed on base camp in the surrounding right-of-way itself. There we go. Okay, um. I will also note in closing that camping in cars remains allowed elsewhere in our community other than in the proposed area. Um, as council might recall, the ordinances were recently amended to allow for up to seventy-two hours for a vehicle uh to be on our streets. Um, the bottom line on this is that uh we have two parallel actions. The city looking to find and provide safe parking areas. Um, it's unfortunate we have folks on an increasing number of staying in their vehicles, but also acknowledging that some individuals and groups um in a fairly focused area have created um an inappropriate environment that has an adverse effect on people who safely wish to go to and from the facility and use it. And with that, I'll turn this over to Tara Sundin.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Um, this should look fairly familiar to you because I presented a similar version to you on September fourteenth. Uh, we're using a couple of slides to capture what the ordinance is really doing. So this is really kind of a rolled-up version of what the ordinance is actually doing. Um, the items in bold and those that are bold and underlined are those that are incorporated into the ordinance. Those are the items that the council needs to take action on, that we need the council's authority for. The other items, like whether or not a permit is twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week versus eight to five, are are measures that the Public Works Director or the administration can undertake without coming to city council. So there aren't too many things here that we're we're seeking, uh, council- So there aren't too many things here that we're, we're seeking council's approval on. Um, but I do want to summarize what, what we're trying to achieve. I will show you the actual exhibit that's, um, this is not going to be the exhibit that's in the ordinance. I'll show that to you in a moment. But just as a reminder, around base camp, so this is our, our lot that we leased. We have York, Cornwall, Champion and Railroad. York does not have any on-street parking. Cornwall, Champion and Railroad have on-street parking. And those items are the, the, the yellow indicate parking stalls that are metered. And the blue are parking stalls in Railroad, but are managed through a permit process rather than meters. And so, um, it's this area in, in blue, which is, we're focused on, on this, this slide here. Public Works refers to this as the North Lot. And we've already started issuing permits on a 24/7 basis, so that's already underway. And we've already started ensuring that the vehicles must have a valid and current vehicle registration before getting a permit. New practice, um, but one we thought was probably wise, um, in many of our, our, our permit lots. These two additional ones line up how we're managing, they kind of sync up that how we're going to manage the parking lots around, um, this, this base camp. So it kind of syncs up the practice that we've already started here at the restricted parking area, which is that people can't use these parking stalls for any other purpose other than to park their vehicles or to retrieve a vehicle. This isn't a place where we're hanging out or, um, as Rick mentioned, where we're using this as a place to be for housing in a vehicle or in a tent. So that's really what this piece here is, is lining up. And then the other item that's included in, in the ordinance is to expand the prohibition on sitting and lying to include other public spaces. So the existing ordinance spoke to sidewalks, but what we've been seeing, seeing pictures of neighbors are experiencing is people are sitting and lying in other places like in landscaping beds or in parking stalls, um, even in the lanes at, at least one point in time. Um, so we wanted to clean this ordinance up because the, the prohibition needs to expand a little bit beyond just the sidewalk area so that we can be a little more effective in this, this part of our city. And then this, um, the other areas, uh, that prohibit, prohibit sitting in line are from 7:00 AM until 9:00 PM. And what we're proposing, uh, just in this one block of our entire city is that that prohibition be 24/7 as well. Same enforcement as I've, I've walked through with you. Um, and then when it comes to the metered parking, um, there's nothing that, we're not seeking uh, any changes to the way we're, we're managing the parking itself. It's just focused on the prohibition to sitting and lying, as I just discussed. What you'll see in your packet is not all of this level of detail, but you'll see that this is the boundary that all of these additional, well, a couple of these additional rules are going to be focused on. And with that, I, um, I actually have to admit, I can't recall if Peter was supposed to go after me or I was supposed to return it. Back to Rick.
Peter.
Peter.
I can, uh, I think most of it's been covered, but, um, just to kind of, uh, using the ordinance as an outline, the whereas clauses established the basis for this ordinance. Those behaviors that Rick has talked about as well as Tara. The whereas clauses talk about the fact this is kind of focused on the concentrated behavior. It also recognizes Public Works' ability to establish parking conditions generally, but in this particular circumstance, because this, the, the two conditions that we're talking about really kind of arguably go into that area of saying no camping or, um, uh, no kind of hanging out around the vehicles. We felt that it was appropriate that that be something that is part of a council ordinance. And then you get into the operative provisions of the ordinance and there's really three main parts. It establishes that zone. It establishes those parking conditions, uh, specific to permit parking areas. Keep in mind that the Public Works Department can designate certain areas as, uh, permit parking areas. And then the remedy, if this condition is violated, would be a revocation of that permit. But there is also a process built into the code for challenging that revocation. So there's due process built into it. And then finally is the sitting and line portion. Again, all of this focused on that very narrow area that is established at the very beginning of the, the ordinance. So, um, that's really the overview in terms of the, how the ordinance is laid out, but I can answer any questions as well.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, Michael.
I was wondering if Mr. Sepler would put back up that one map where he showed the places where people can sit, um, already. That was my concern that I shared with, uh, with him earlier. Um, I understand the need to prevent misbehaviors around the shelters, so the shelter occupants are safe. But for good sakes, people do need to sit down and I wanted to make sure they could sit down nearby. I don't know if you can do that, Mr. Sepler? I mean, I walked that area and I, I saw a few places I thought maybe we could put a public bench or two to basically say, uh, we do not want people doing anything wrong, but you know, hey, here's a place to sit. I'm wondering, I, I think I'd kind of like to ask the staff to look. If you'll know, there's tons of seating areas there to the west and not so many to the east or north and south. I, I guess I would make a request to the administration to work with Public Works to see if there aren't viable locations to add public benches, to actually, uh, create spaces where it's a good idea for people to sit and rest. Because I want to protect the negative impacts, but I also want to give people opportunities to rest in our downtown area. So I don't know how the administration feels about that request.
Um, what I might say, uh, again, we consult with, uh, both clerks for some of the park properties as well as Public Works as we certainly could investigate it. As I understand it, your interest is to make sure that outside of the exclusion area, there's reasonable choices for seating. And we could take a look and evaluate, um, if that could work. Um, we also will be mindful about any unintended consequences of where we locate it. So places with good visibility, um, areas that have respite. Again, the intent here is not to, um, be prejudicial on, on folks who want to sit somewhere and provide, there are reasonable places to do that. But some of the behaviors, um, have been so adverse, we need to, um, ensure that folks can come and go to base camp. I should also note that base camp does have a fairly large courtyard area that is weather protected, that provides seating too, uh, for those who use it. And folks are welcome if they could follow the simple rules. So yes, we'll pursue that.
Uh, Councilmember Vargas.
Uh, thanks. I, I know this is really challenging to figure out how we balanced helping people who are experiencing homelessness, but also supporting our local business community and the commitment we made to them downtown. So I'm, uh, really happy to hear that we're looking for a place for people to be actually parked and that's okay. That is excellent news. Um, but I am curious, one of the things when we passed this is, uh, the Lighthouse Mission made a commitment to do patrols around the area. And now we're doing more policy, um, to support this. So I'm curious what happened here and what the overlay is in regards to the Lighthouse Mission and their patrols around the area.
I'll start and I'll ask Tara to follow up if I miss anything. You know, uh, one thing that the, uh, the neighborhood businesses have been is very complimentary of Lighthouse Mission and their outreach. They've done alley cleanups, they've honored their commitment to do patrols. Um, additionally, the city has funded through contractual agreement with Lighthouse to do, um, morning pickups of litter and trash, um, in a couple of the blocks that surround this facility. And that's been fairly successful and actually been adjusted over time. So, um, I think, uh, the general consensus is they've been an extraordinarily good partner. They've asked us for this protection because it's very hard for them to safely operate the facility when there's a risk to people who wish to use it. And, um, we're following up on that. Tara, did I, did I catch most of it?
I'd just add one thing, which is, um, why we're asking you to do this is so that there is the policy in place for them when they're doing the patrols and they ask somebody that's lying in a parking stall to move along. There's something that's backing that up and right now they don't have that and the police department doesn't have that.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you very much. I, I definitely support this because I saw, um, I think a good example that we're trying to prevent, even though we want to make sure that, um, the public feels safe about, uh, patronite, you know, going to these businesses close by. But I was out running the stoplights and I watched, um, an individual leave the base camp enclosure and start to head as though they're going to go up the street more towards the library and then watched a group of people who were hanging out, um, off to the side, go and intercept a person. And you can tell that person did not want to necessarily be, uh, contacted by this other individual. And you could kind of see the, um, kind of the dialogue and then the individual being able to break themselves further away and the person who intercepted being kind of crassed and harassment. And so I think that, you know, when people are concerned that all we're doing is creating, uh, rules that, uh, criminalize homelessness, I don't see it that way. I see it truly as there are people who, for whatever reason, they cannot utilize base camp, but they are coming in because there's more, um, maybe sense of community. So they're drawn in, but there are individuals who may not want to be, um, contacted by these individuals. And having seen it firsthand, um, I, I think this is a wise decision. It gives people a little bit more distance to be able to go someplace that they feel safe and, and not necessarily be harassed by other individuals who, um, perhaps can find someplace else to, um, frequent. And so I do appreciate this and with that, I, um, I do support this.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, President Knudsen. Um, I support the need for our community to, um, yeah, protect the residents at base camp and those surrounding businesses. Been really honoring that, you know, contract and sort of promise that, that we made by extending that, you know, offer to have base camp housed there, um, and that we're going to follow up. And so I support that. My concern is really the, I mean, one, the enforcement pieces where when people make accusations about criminalizing homelessness, I mean, when I think about the sitting and lying where there's a $250 fine and then multiple offenses, um, you know, that, that sort of escalates. The individuals that we're talking about and the behavior, I don't know that this is going to deter that, but we'll maybe catch them up and, you know, that criminal system and they, I would presume don't have the ability to, you know, to pay. And so I don't know that that's a, a solution. And my concern further is, you know, we mentioned specifically in the ordinance, you know, seeking to encourage such behavior to be dispersed rather than concentrated. And so again, I think this is just a precursor to the budget discussions to come, but I am going to urge council, maybe not, you know, specifically with respect to this ordinance, but going forward, we need to invest in and commit to some more robust, long-term solutions because just dispersing this behavior throughout the community may be solving the problem at base camp, but it is not solving the problem for our broader community. And we are in desperate need of, of some action there. So, um, although I will support this, I, I am asking for, for more with respect to a, a solution that will, will protect and serve our entire community, including those unsheltered. So thank you.
Councilmember Hausmann.
Um, I, what I have to say, it sounds a lot like what Hannah said. Um, I, I'm really not a fan of Band-Aid solutions and I'm also not a fan of consequences, as outlined here, that, you know, fines for, for people who can't pay them doesn't make a lot of sense. So just in general, I, I will, I will be voting to approve this, but I, with, with the understanding that we're moving towards something else, that these are the issues that we're seeing there, um, and we're getting lots and lots of accounts of lots and lots of issues that are happening around this area, very concentrated, issues that are, were happening before in downtown. But now it's just, there's a lot happening right there. Um, and so it's very, very noticeable. And I, you know, these are complex. The reason that we're seeing these issues is incredibly complex. It's, it's decades of, of failed policy. And we're not, we're not going to change it in a year and it's going to take decades probably to get, to get ourselves out of this, but, uh, but we are working on it. And so with that in mind, knowing that we are working on it, there have been steps made. There continue to be steps made and we understand the mountain that we need to move to ultimately take care of this problem. This is something that's needed now, but it's temporary. So.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Okay, the motion been made by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Vargas. Any further discussion? One last one, Michael, go ahead.
I would like to emphasize the thing that, uh, Mr. Sepler started with. It's something, it's, it's a bit of a Band-Aid, but it's a necessary Band-Aid that I've been pushing for, for I think probably a year and a half now, uh, which is, um, officially supervised and safe parking. There are people in our community who are living in their cars, which by the way, is their legal right to do. Their constitutional right to do. But it's not always safe to do it. And for those people who are down their luck, who are living out of their car as it, as the kind of the best alternative that they can afford, I think we ought to be able to, um, make it safer for them. And so, uh, we've talked about it, uh, in this homeless studies work group for well over a year. Uh, the beginning of this year, the city council asked the administration to develop a proposal. If not for COVID, we might already have the RFP out there. We might already establish a safe parking program such as is run nearby down in Kirkland, uh, the Presbyterian church. So, I mean, only if you view what the city is doing in its entirety, does this make sense. What we're doing here is helping along with the county and private partner to spend, you know, over a million dollars, um, about 1.8, I think, or maybe less than 1.3 over the next three years to provide shelter for homeless people. And this is a movement to make it better and safer for those homeless people. It's not an anti-homeless effort. If we have safe parking, if we have more transitional housing, if we continue to spend the half a million dollars a year that we're spending on rental subsidies, including rental subsidies for people who are homeless at time of entry to supportable housing. If we do all of that, then this makes sense, but only in context. If viewed in isolation, you're saying, why are you doing this one thing against one group of people in one city block just because they're homeless? Out of context, it looks funny. In context, you see the sum total of all the things we're trying to do and other things we should do and are not yet doing. In the sum total picture, this makes more sense than it does in isolation. And I hope members of our community, um, who at first blush may not like what they see, will understand that. Because I certainly had the same reaction, whoa, wait a minute, what are we doing? But if viewed in context, the largest context, um, I can support this.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now go to a work session to consider amending the development agreement with Parbury's Inc. and associated entities.
Good afternoon. Tara Sundin, Community and Economic Development Manager for the City of Bellingham. Today I have Amy Cramm, our legal counsel for the City of Bellingham here, and available to answer any questions. And then Kevin Moore, who is, uh, the representative of Parbury Family. And Kevin's going to be providing a, a short presentation after I, um, open with a few, uh, remarks about the memo that I included in your packet. So, um, just as a reminder, we entered into a development agreement with the Parbury family back on. So just as a reminder, we entered into a development agreement with the Parbury family back on February 21st, 2019. The agreement with Parbury was executed to create conditions that we believe are and were necessary to transition this area from what it is today into an urban village. Circumstances have changed for the Parbury family. Kevin touched on that. And that means that the Parbury family is changing the way they're thinking about one of their businesses, which is Northwest Recycling. The recycling business is a non-conforming use in the Old Town area. It is located on a portion of Parbury's real estate holdings. So Parbury's owns about six full city blocks in Old Town. And Northwest Recycling is on a portion of three of those blocks. And then I want to just kind of remind us all, I didn't do this last time, but really what the purpose of a development agreement is. It's really to provide predictability and certainty for the landowners or the future developers that are coming in to develop that land. Development agreements don't by themselves guarantee, and they don't necessarily require outcomes. But they can be used as incentives. And that's the case with our development agreement. So the council can't require Parbury to move its business. You can't require Parbury to redevelop something at a certain timeframe. But you can incentivize them to do that. And that's what this agreement does. It says, if you do this, Parbury, we will do this. And it's really about street infrastructure here. So think of this development agreement as a carrot, not a stick, because I got a little sense that how could this be happening? You know, we're requiring them to do things. And I just wanted to kind of set that stage. Again, if Parbury doesn't perform, the city is no longer committed to investing in that infrastructure. And while there's no guarantees here, we still believe that they remain committed. We've had many conversations with them over the past few months. And we believe that they are committed to redeveloping Old Town. I want to take another minute because I think there is a little bit of a misunderstanding about what Parbury's role is going to be. And Kevin will talk about it a little bit more, but I wanted you guys to know that the city administrations have never thought, and myself as the project manager, that Parbury was going to be the developer, that they're going to come in and invest, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars on a business that they don't do, which is developing real estate. But what they do, do is they own buildings and they invest in them. And they, they are housing residents in our community. They own the Lottie Roth block just outside of Old Town. They have renovated the San Juan building, which houses people in downtown Bellingham. So that's always been their interest. I just wanted that to be clear for council as well. So I'm going to provide a summary of the, there were a few topics raised by the council at the end of the hearing. And I included a more robust response in the memo, but I wanted to touch on a few of those things. Milestones. I recognize, and I don't blame anybody for being confused about the milestones. I provided a table in your memo. It's, I'm not planning on going through it unless you ask me to. But it should be a better description of what has changed and what has not changed. The council gave staff the ability to extend certain, or extend milestones under certain circumstances. And we've done that. And they've impacted two of the six milestones. They, those extensions have impacted milestones one and two by nine months. This is a 10-year agreement. And then the other thing that we did was more out of our own, maybe sanity, if you will. Because when we originally wrote the agreement, we had these milestones attached to numbers of months since the agreement was executed. And some of those milestones were connected to previous milestones. And it was really quite, um, it, it just was, for, for our purposes, not very, it wasn't very helpful. And so the, we've inserted date certain in there. So for example, the, the previous agreement or the, they said, you know, within 48 months of execution of the agreement, this will happen. And instead, we, we changed it to read, by February 21st, 2023, this will happen. So we didn't change the date. That's still 48 months. We just put a date in there so that we could track it a little bit easier. That's a simple one, but other ones kind of compounded on one another. Recycling, Councilmember Littlequist brought this one up, and brought up the issue of recycling and garbage contracts. And per his follow-up request to staff, this item will be discussed at a public works committee in the, in the near future. I think he is already working with Eric on that. We do recognize there's questions regarding recycling, but we, we need to keep this agreement on Old Town and the family that owns property there and Northwest Recycling somewhat separate. And not, not connected with the, the agreement the city actually has, which is with sanitary services. Affordable housing, that was raised as well as what can we do with our housing levy to kind of help spur, spur development here? As you heard from Samia today, we, we bring in $4 million a year in this levy. We, on average, are investing about $2 million for a major development like we would expect to see here. Like Eleanor Place, or the one that we're, we're helping Mercy do in Barclay Village. About $2 million going in, leveraging 20-plus million dollars. And so these projects are complicated and they do take some time. So we're looking at tax credits and housing trust fund, pretty savvy developers. Kevin invited all of them down to meet with him. I was, I was present. So the Bellingham Housing Authority, Catholic Housing Services, the Opportunity Council, even Colson Community Land Trust and some other advocates sat down. Kevin talked to them about some of their plans, shared the properties that they are willing and open to selling to affordable housing developers. And I think that Kevin will show you exactly what those properties are. We think this is really promising. I personally haven't seen a landowner do that before. And I heard that from some of those agencies. Sammy and I have been talking to these developers though for years about Old Town. And Old Town will be a priority as a lot of our urban villages are. And then a couple of comments on public, some of the public comments that you've received. Most of which has been from neighbors of base camp about their concerns over the low barrier shelter. And we definitely agree that there's a sentence that can and should be deleted. And Lisa's caught this one with us as well, is the parties acknowledge that the continued presence of the low barrier shelter located at 1013 Holly Street may inhibit Parbury's ability to achieve certain milestones. So we're recommending that you delete that sentence. It's not represented in your packet, but we're ready to respond with, with that later in the afternoon. However, we, we really don't agree with some of the comments that we should terminate this agreement and revisit the Old Town subarea plan. If Parbury's decided to keep Northwest Recycling, or if they wanted to keep Northwest Recycling in Old Town, and they made that clear to us. Remember that development agreement isn't necessarily a, a stick, but rather a carrot. Then of course, we'd want to revisit whether or not our land use made sense for the long term. But we don't think that's the case right now, especially with, with the interests here from the Parbury family. So the Old Town plan estimates between 800 and 1,100 units plus more commercial. We might see more units as a result of maybe commercial not having the uptick, especially with what's happening on, in our economy right now. Parbury's owns 46% of the developable property in Old Town, and with 600 West Holly, over 70%. The agreement contains two terms to incentivize this development to happen. It's to build streets. As a reminder, we only build streets here if the Old Town urban village is being implemented. And the second is an option to purchase 600 West Holly. The development agreement's transferable to successors of interest. That was always intended. We're always intended that the Parbury may very likely sell a block or two or several to a developer that's skilled, capable and financed to develop these kind of properties or projects. And so that interest is going to carry with those successors of interest. So that the incentive, the incentives that we're granting or proposing to continue to grant really will carry forward with subsequent owners. And a reminder, our goal is to attract investment to this area. That is perceived as riskier than many of our urban villages. We've heard that from many potential developers. And you guys know that this is a landfill area and just like the waterfront, where we also have a development agreement with the, the landowner, which happens to be the port of Bellingham. So now isn't the time to give up on Old Town. We believe that we should continue and support this partnership. I will say that Rick Sepler is available when we get into the discussion as the planning director. If you need his perspective on this agreement, the co-location of a, a shelter, the mission, their future plans for locating it here. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kevin to provide you with a presentation on their thoughts about redeveloping Old Town.
Thank you, Tara. And Tara's going to be driving the slide presentation, so bear with us as we make those transitions. Good afternoon, council members. I appreciate the, another opportunity to talk to you about this topic. You know, you can go to slide two there, Tara. The, the Parbury family has been a business owner, a provider of housing and a civic benefactor for almost 100 years. We're in our fourth generation at this point. And so, you know, longstanding family in the community. What I wanted to do is clarify a few of the remarks that I made last, at the last meeting. I probably did not make myself particularly clear when I said we were selling part of the business. And so let me, let me just clarify that. Northwest Recycling is owned by the Parbury family. And we own three different distinct business units. They're shown there on your screen, scrap metal processing, the residential recycling facility and container rentals. The only thing that we are talking about selling right now is the business assets of the residential recycling facility. So we will continue to operate the other two businesses, as well as every other thing that we currently do in Old Town or elsewhere in the city. That will not include the underlying land. That's a separate asset of the Parbury family, and that will not be transferred to a buyer. And, you know, I just want to reiterate what Tara said, that we are absolutely committed to the transformation of Old Town. And, you know, it has not progressed at a pace that any of us are ecstatic about. But we believe we're past the issues that have caused some of these delays and that we can proceed, you know, with, with good pace going forward. And, and we really do value the partnership that we've had with the city. So, next slide, Tara. This is a map of our existing properties, as Tara mentioned, with the inclusion of 600 West Holly. It's a substantial part of what Old Town can be. And, you know, again, that's why we think the partnership is so important. Next slide, Tara. So we are not a developer. You know, we, our core competency is elsewhere. But what we intend to do, what we've always intended to do and was articulated in our development strategy that we were required to provide within six months of the signing, is that we will be offering the parcels to other local developers, preferably. You know, possibly joint venturing with some folks, but we will develop two properties in particular. I reference there as the Territorial Courthouse, but it's actually the Helen Logi Museum of Art. That's what its official name is. And that's, that rehab is actually almost done. And then the 700 West Holly Building, which will be applying for permit shortly. The remaining parcels, we will be looking at all kinds of options in terms of working with developers and nonprofits to make those available for purchase. I don't want to spend much time there on the bottom, but you know, we are looking at this as a long-term, kind of a scenario. We are not looking to make a quick buck on this. We are really looking at what's in the best interest of the community. We want it to be a place that Bellingham is proud of. And we also want to respect the historical origins of Old Town in the process. Next slide, Tara. So these are the, the cross-hatched ones there. There's one on West Holly, two on E Street and, and one on Astor, a full block, actually. Those parcels are available now. They're not currently used in the recycling operation. They are being appraised as we speak. They'll be listed shortly. And we didn't just have a meeting with, you know, a group of nonprofits one time. We've, we've reached out to workforce housing providers, nonprofits, developers, and continue. In fact, I can't say who, but I've got two strong expressions of interest by those kinds of providers, and actually the affordable housing providers for two of those parcels. So we are very hopeful that that's something that can progress quickly. Next slide, Tara. Not going to remind, this is the reminder that this is a landfill. It's the former Holly Street landfill. It's covered by a consent decree. It's a brownfield site. That and the fact that Parbury has existed on this property as a non-conforming use has always made it difficult to, for developers to see past that. But we've resolved those issues and, and we're ready to move forward. Next slide. Want to just kind of paint a picture of what, what we see. This is a back-of-the-napkin kind of an approach. It was our initial thinking. What you see there is kind of a, a core of housing, a ring of housing, if you will, surrounding, surrounding a commercial core. The core could be any combination of, you know, public space, boutique hotels, commercial ventures. And then you would have a mix of workforce and affordable housing, perhaps some office surrounding that. So that was our original vision that has kind of informed a lot of the communication that we've had with folks. Next slide. We further refined that with Jeff McClure in RMC. This is just the core three blocks there. You can see the Lighthouse Mission at the far left of that image, the 700 West Holly Building, brick building, former Pacific Marine on the right. And it's, it was a vision that we, that we've used as a working model. In the center there, you see kind of a marketplace type environment, a commercial destination. In light of recent events with COVID, we're, you know, rethinking how that might work or whether that's still a viable option. But nonetheless, it's, what you see is a live-work environment. So you have housing surrounded by places to eat, you know, play and work. And that's, that's really what we're trying to accomplish here. And pass that vision on to any of the developers that we will be working with. Next slide, Tara. First project will be the 700 West Holly. I think I talked about that last time. We are almost permit-ready. It will be 11, 11 or 12 units upstairs. It'll be commercial space downstairs. And we're, you know, we're just really on the verge of being ready to go with that space. Next slide. This is the Helen Logi Museum of Art. It's the former Territorial Courthouse. It's been 100% renovated. It's 95% complete and will be done shortly. But this will be another one of those kind of destination-type things that we would see in, in Old Town that would draw people into Old Town. So we're excited about that. And that's, that's really, you know, that's the whole presentation. Be turning it back to Tara. Be turning it back to Tara and you for questions. Happy to, happy to provide any additional insight that we can.
Okay, council. Questions? Comments? Lisa?
Thank you, Council President. I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to see that email I sent a little bit earlier today about a possible revision. Let me bring up my document here so I can cite the page. So it was on page 243. It's the bottom paragraph under Milestone 6. There is some content there that I would like to change. One of which would be, I primarily, in rewriting this, it was looking at where we would be giving the project manager sole, sole authority to be able to basically make extensions to the requirements. And so, and rewriting the paragraph, would it be useful to read what I wrote or has people had an opportunity to look at it?
Go ahead and read it.
Okay. So the modified paragraph would read, "The milestones set forth herein are based on Parbury's and the city's best estimate of redevelopment schedule for Parbury property based on current market conditions. If any delay is anticipated by Parbury, such anticipated delays shall be communicated to the city project manager in writing when known by Parbury along with a request for an extension of the applicable requirement. The city project manager, after consultation with Parbury's project manager, may, in their discretion, extend the requirement in Section 1 to not exceed six months. An extension for a requirement that is beyond six months or an additional extension once one has been approved by the city project manager must be submitted to City Council for review by the city project manager. City Council shall determine if the agreement should be modified or terminated. An extension shall not be unreasonably denied as long as diligent progress has been made in achieving the applicable milestone." City Council will determine unreasonable and diligent progress as part of the review. My reasoning behind it was because in that paragraph one, there was a comment about the Lighthouse Mission and the drop-in, and I felt that needed to be taken out. But also, I personally wasn't comfortable with the sole authority to grant extensions without definition of how long those extensions were or how City Council would be notified of those extensions so that we still had some oversight. I'm flexible on the six months. I had put that in brackets so that council, if they were comfortable with the change, would be able to determine how long of an extension that is. But a lot of the content I did take from the original paragraph and then just read wordsmith a little bit in order to insert that there would still be oversight for lengthy extensions by council.
Amy, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Lisa for helping us in this drafting process. And Tara and I have gone over your suggestions, and we think in general it makes total sense if that's what council wants to do here. So obviously, there's people who want to discuss it, but we went ahead and inserted your suggestions into the actual text of the redevelopment agreement in the amended version so that you could all see what it looked like. And if you were comfortable with proceeding with Lisa's suggestions, we would have a document for you for later this evening. And so you'll probably need some time to just look at this, but in general, we reiterated what you had asked for, Lisa. There are a couple tweaks that needed to be done because of language that was already in there or some inconsistencies, but in general, it's all there.
Okay, can somebody give me a copy of that for tonight? Or are you, somebody? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any, any discussion on this? Michael?
I would definitely support this amendment, at least were to make it. I think it's appropriate that short extensions are administrative, but longer extensions are, would need to come to the City Council. This whole agreement is kind of an act of faith, an act of hope by the city and the City Council to spur development. I'm really invested in getting this done right. And so I think it's appropriate that the City Council not entirely step back from the process.
Anybody else? Can I get the full screen back so I can see who has their hands raised up?
Yep.
Thanks. Okay, is there any other questions? Councilmember Vargas?
Not, not a question so much as in I too support this going forward. My concern was always delay. So anything that we can help it go forward, I absolutely support. I do have a curiosity though, because it could be a while before we have anything on these corners. And I'm wondering if there's any provision at all for us to do anything temporary in 600 West Holly Street until any of these things go forward? Because that so attractive pit has been there for a while, and it would be really great if we could do something temporarily. And if, if that's something we'd be open to since we are not, we are not going full blast on this right now.
So the option on this, Parbury's only has a little over two years left on that option. We've talked about that pinky over the years. We've talked about, you know, but, but it's, it's a site that needs significant investment. It's not one of those, let's do a little something and it'd be inexpensive. We have talked about maybe some work on the fence to make it a little bit more attractive, some artwork or something. It's just that balance of how much investment to put in. It'd be pretty challenging to do a temporary use on this site and have it be economical. But we could explore it. Staff would be willing to explore it.
Lisa, did you have your hand up again? Go ahead.
Um, I did have one more question for background, since I wasn't on council when this first came through. This is kind of my first bite. I paid a lot of attention to it, but the nuances, to be honest, there's things, as a citizen, I did not read word for word. So on page 218, number five, it states, "Nothing in this agreement or option to purchase shall alter the city's responsibility related to contamination on the Holly Street landfill site. And as between the city and Parbury, the city shall remain responsible for remediating any pre-existing hazardous materials located on the Holly Street property." I'm assuming there has been studies done to understand what the contamination is and possible mitigation that would be needed. But my concern is, is it will be dependent on what type of project goes there. I mean, there's a difference between capping contamination and building upon it versus if they wanted to put in, probably not a good location, but like, you know, underground parking, and there's a lot of stuff to be removed. I'm just kind of wondering what, how much money the city would be responsible for? And is there some kind of limitation or partnership so we don't find ourselves in the same position as we did with the other contaminated site down past GP, which is extraordinarily expensive for all parties involved? So, any back information would be useful.
Go ahead, Amy.
Um, yes, thank you, Lisa. So this is quite different from the RG Haley site that you were just mentioning, because this is completely cleaned up now. So this was a contaminated site, and it was remediated, I believe, might have been 2003, '06, when it was finished. And so on this site, and one of the reasons that it is a little bit more challenging, there are certain restrictions. And part of Kevin's slideshow earlier showed the restrictive covenant on many of the properties that are there right now, 600 West Holly being one of the main places where contamination was both removed and treated and capped. And so that's all done. The city was the main responsible party because it was a landfill that the city filled, and that was the problem. There were some chemicals leaking out, and so that was remediated. The city is the potentially liable party on the site. If anything should continue to happen, the city is liable. And I think this is a pretty typical term in a contract when you are maybe inheriting the property but had absolutely nothing to do with contaminating it, and it's already cleaned up, and you don't somehow want to be part of that cleanup when you weren't before. So, and I have, if you're interested, you can look at Ecology's website, or we can provide the consent decree that discusses how it was cleaned up.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Did you make a motion, Lisa?
I would move that we approve this. I forget what it's called. I would, I would move that we approve this as discussed and amended by the, the changes that Tara will be forwarding to City Council for review before tonight's vote.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Is there any discussion? Michael?
Does that include the one change that staff was recommending in addition to the one that you introduced, Lisa?
It does.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made, seconded. Without any further discussion, all those in favor will say aye. Aye. motion carries unanimously. Michael?
Before we move on, rather than your old and new, I would just like to make a motion at this time. This has to do with the recycling issue. Mr. Johnson recommended that the best way to handle this is to make a motion to ask staff for a presentation on the existing contract with SSC with emphasis on recycling in Bellingham and contract terms. I would make that motion.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Lilquist, second by Councilmember Anderson.
So to continue, Mr. Johnson did recommend that he thought November timeframe might be realistic and that there's actually a number of issues with the changing landscape for recycling that maybe deserves some discussion. So it wouldn't just be on the SSC contract, but really would be on recycling in Bellingham.
Okay. Okay. Without any further discussion, all those in favor will say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. We will now go to approval of minutes. We have the September 14th meeting for the afternoon session.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Lilquist, second by Councilmember Huffman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Anything else under older new business? Councilmember Vargas?
Yeah, I have one thing for older new business. I, I had a question. I wanted to have a little discussion about our agenda. The last two council meetings, they've been starting at nine o'clock, and we had made an agreement a couple of years back to try and start as late in the day as possible because it makes such a long day for everyone, especially if we're here till 10 o'clock at night, to start our meetings at 11:00 and then push back if we have to. But I've noticed they're starting at nine with big breaks in between, and I'm, I'm not sure what, why this change.
Sure. I can tell you why, and this is a prime example of what's going on this afternoon. We were supposed to be in executive session at 2:30. It's now 3:32. So if we don't push some of these things off here and get them, I mean, we can change the time in the morning, that's no big deal. I mean, if you don't want to be at nine, or you don't want to be at 10:00, we can be at 11:00. But this morning, we had no idea that those would go as fast as they did. So that's why, that's why we did it that way. But our agendas now are starting to get packed again, and that's, either we're going to be here till 5:30, 6:00 at night, or we get some of the stuff done in the morning and then, but we can figure, I mean, you, it's all open to figure out what time you want to start in the morning. We just started years ago with nine and 10:00 or 11:00. I mean, that's, that's up to the committees to, to decide that.
Yeah, if at all preferable, if we could, and, and I don't want to, our, you're right, our afternoons are getting very full, so I don't want to like push them to the afternoon. But if we could start, like this morning's meetings, I think all could have started at 11:00 and we would have been done, or even 10:30, but.
Yeah, that's fair. We could do that.
That would be great. It just makes for a less longer day for staff, for all of us, the later we start in the day, it helps a little bit.
Sure. We'll look at that.
Great. My brain gets jello late at night.
Anybody else have any other, no, or new business, Seth?
Yeah, just, I wanted to just bring this up and convey the, and confirm the draft budget schedule. So if I could, just, Mr. President, I'll just read out the proposed timeframe.
Sure.
Just for the record. So we're wanting to take advantage of some off Mondays, non-council meeting days to have budget work sessions. So the proposal presently is to, on October 5th, have budget overview, the BB, the Bellingham Police Department presentation from 2:00 to 5:00. And then on the 12th of October, regular council day, we would do Fire, Muni Court from 10:00 to 12:00. On the 19th of October, an off Monday, special budget work session, we would do parks, library, museum planning from 1:00 to 4:00. On the 26th, regular council day again, between 10:00 and 12:00, we would do human resources, finance, IT, and legal. On November 2nd, Public Works, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. On November 9th, another regular council day, we would do the mayor's office and council budgets from 10:00 AM to 12:00. And then on the 16th of November, we would hold that as a budget work session between 1:00 and 4:00 if need be. So if we can get a wink, wink from council that those tentative work session dates are okay, that'd be helpful. Anybody winking, nodding, shaking their heads, or?
Well, that was a lot. I couldn't even keep up trying to write it down, so maybe.
We'll get a copy. We'll get a copy. Can you send us a copy, Seth?
Pinky, can you see that? There you go. Okay.
All right.
We'll send it to you. It's basically Mondays, Mondays and, so, but fair enough, Pinky. We'll get that, we'll send it out to everyone. The, the, the other item relates to the every-other-year survey of Bellingham residents, which is currently underway. In the last biennial budget, that had been budgeted to, to happen. City is again partnering with Western Washington University, the Economic and Business Research Center, to conduct a survey of Bellingham's residents. The goal of the survey is to help us gauge people's satisfaction and experiences with city services and how well we're doing to meet their needs. We've conducted similar surveys roughly every other year since 2004. It's all posted on the, the city's website. Letters are in the mail right now to about 7,000 randomly selected Bellingham residents inviting them to participate in the survey. It is offered online and by telephone in English and Spanish. We have taken several new steps this year in an effort to increase the response rate of renters and people under age 30. That was a criticism in previous surveys, and we've sought to remedy it this year. A survey will be underway through late October. We may have some preliminary results in late November with a full report available around the end of the year. Michael Lilquist has participated in, in this effort. So if you have specific questions on this project, you can ask him. I'm sure he'd be happy to weigh in or reach out to the mayor's office. So I just wanted to report that information. Thank you very much.
I've just got a couple of things, and this is very difficult, but I'm going to give it my best shot. You know, we react to a lot of things here at City Council, and I, we have for all the years I've been on there. But the last couple of weeks, I've seen a couple of things happen that really, really got to me and have given me many sleepless nights. First of all, I was in California last week, and while I was down there, I saw a video. It was a video of two sheriff officers sitting in their car and both getting shot point-blank by somebody. and both getting shot point blank by somebody who just came up to the window and pulled the trigger. One was a 30-year-old female, a mother of a six-year-old daughter. The other was a 24-year-old. They were just sitting in the car doing nothing. But the sickening thing about this is what happened when they were taken to the hospital? The hospital was surrounded by protesters and nobody could get in and out, not even their families. Now I bring this up because the last few months, we've talked a lot about justice. We've talked a lot about making things better here in Bellingham. We're talking about revamping our 911 system. We're talking about Police Advisory Board and we're talking about a whole host of things. And I have to say, when I got home after seeing that, then I was texted something last weekend that I didn't even know about. It was a protest in front of our police department where people came there and that's fine, you can have a protest. But they brought a pinata with them. And the pinata was a pig dressed in a police uniform. And people that work in that building had to watch as little children came up and whacked away at that. And I see this and I just say, this is not Bellingham. It's not Bellingham at all. I can go back 60 years when I was five years old and I met my first police chief. I've been here almost three decades. I've worked side by side with our police officers, past and present. When we had the pipeline disaster, the police went into action. When we had the incident on 9/11, they gathered us all into the mayor's boardroom. They didn't know if they had to have wall-to-wall protection for all of us or what. But the police were there for us. And the police are there for this community. Their mothers, their fathers, their sisters, their brothers, their grandparents. And they're great people. I am having a hard time sitting here, reading all the emails about defund the police and eliminate the police and eradicate the police and get rid of them. But you know something? The biggest reason I bring this up, because I want the police officers to know, every single one of them. After being in here almost 30 years, I can safely say that a majority of citizens do not feel that way. That's what keeps me going. Because if it wasn't for that, and when you lose that in your community, we have community policing. David Dahl has done more reforms in the last few years than we've had in many years. They're all good people. They need a little boost and law enforcement nationwide. And I fully understand people's anger. But shooting at police officers and beating up a pinata and halfway teaching a child, a child to beat up on a police officer in a pinata. When I first got elected, I went to about 150, 200 dare graduations. The most popular people in the dare graduations were the police officers. When it come time to do autographs, they didn't want any council members autograph. They wanted to autograph all those police officers. They worked together, they ate together, they were in class together. They loved the police. And I think it was a big mistake when they took dare out of, out of the, out of the schools. But anyway, I just want to call this out because we do call a lot of things out. But you know what, folks? We, this, we send the police, the mayor and the council send our police officers out in the community to keep us safe. And that's what they're doing. And that's what they're doing. And that, we need to remember that because they are there for us and they have been there for us over and over and over here. So I just wanted to bring that up and get it off my chest. And I just hope that out in the community, people will understand that we're trying to do everything we can to make it better here. But that's a two-way street. Doing that in front of our police department was uncalled for. I just think it was terrible. I have never seen anything like that in my entire life in this town. And I really don't want to see it again because that's just not fair. They don't deserve that kind of action. They are human beings, they're doing their jobs, they're city employees just like us. And I hope, I hope to never see that again. Okay, is there anything else under older new business? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Jean. I swear I am not somebody who is brought to tears very easily. And my old campaign manager probably want to slap me right now because it was always like, don't cry when people tell you emotional things. But I want to let you know that I really appreciate your comments. I think sometimes we hold some things close so that we don't offend people. We try to support everyone, we try to listen to everything. But I've been feeling the same way too. I, I think we can support all members of our community without necessarily making our local police department the, an example of what may not be working right elsewhere. I think we have a lot of things that are working well. And a lot of that is due to the men and women who are working with our community and on our police force. So I so appreciate you coming out and saying your thoughts. And I guess I'll get those wonderful emails pretty soon. So I stand with you on that and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else before we go to executive session? Okay, we have three items in executive session. Potential property acquisition, approximately 10 minutes. Potential litigation, approximately 10 minutes. Labor relations, approximately 15 minutes. Meeting adjourned, we'll go into executive session.
Thank you, Jean.